Motion passes. At this time, we will hear any visitors. We do have a scheduled visitor, but if there are any members of the general public who wish to address the board, you may do so at this time as well. Okay, Jason for Tanager Happenings.
Good evening, everyone.
We have him.
No, that's all right. I just came prepared. So yeah, this is put together as part of my state report that I have to do annually. So you can kind of see how it breaks down based on each grade level, boys, girls, and then each activity that we have. And, you know, from year to year, I always look back two to three years each time and just kind of make sure that nothing jumps out at me too bad as far as drastic drops in numbers or if there's even gains in numbers, looking at if that becomes a trend or if it's just something unusual particularly with this particular year with COVID. Actually, things stayed pretty well consistent. So you can see there, I'll take any questions. Nothing really stood out to me, very consistent with past years as far as our numbers go, which roughly equal about 80% of our school is involved in something, whether it's fine arts or sports. So still maintaining good participation as far as that goes.
This is really nice, Jason. I like the breakdown between the grade levels.
Yeah.
The other format that you've done for us in past years is really nice, too. So just the total per year, I think, if I recall correctly. That's a nice comparison. I tried to find mine and I can't find one.
Oh, each year?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I can, let me put that, I'll put this year's numbers in it and I can send that out to you guys.
Yeah, that's always nice to, because I can't remember from year to year, but it's nice to see the trends or compares.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep, I can sure do that.
After the state receives this, do they put out any, like a summary for schools in our class so we know how we compare to other Class A?
They do not. Basically, this is so that we pay the bill as far as who participates, how many kids participate, and we pay the appropriate membership fee.
One thing we'll talk about, we'll talk about it briefly later on in the meeting, but we'll, more prepared for next meeting, we'll be talking about, do some of our sports warrant a consideration of another assistant coach? And so based on these numbers, Jason and I will be talking a little bit, for example, with the addition of pole vault and javelin at the high school track area, that's one that we're considering and maybe an additional assistant coach should be necessary, maybe even cross country, depending on what those numbers do. So we'll have some, a formal request for that in the future. But that's kind of what we looked at with this data to try to determine if we're, we hope we're growing, but at the same time, we have to be able to justify those.
So I noticed that cheerleading doesn't have any numbers.
That is based because this report is, has to be competitive.
Competitive, okay.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
But we did have our allotment of cheerleaders that the state allows. So, yep.
Very good. Other questions for Jason? Carol?
So recently, the homeschool rules for participation have changed or will be changing for next year. So do you anticipate much of a change for any of our activities going forward with the new law?
I really, you know, we've talked about that, you know, just looking at students now currently that are homeschooling that would choose to participate, that wouldn't necessarily take the two classes that we require as a policy. I don't think it's going to be a huge impact. The scary part is the potential that it could. What is scary about it to me is that the homeschool participation doesn't necessarily have any rules for GPA and behavior type things where the others do. We have policies set, the state has policies set, and so that'll be an interesting dynamic there to see how that's handled, because we don't want people to avoid being held accountable with grades and behavior and just avoid it with a homeschool status. So we hope that it's going to be minimum. That's my gut reaction, is that it should be minimal effect on us, if any at all. But it sure is raising eyebrows around the state.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Jason.
You bet, thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Huska.
We will move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
None.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Carol.
Second.
Second by Rachel. All in favor of approving the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Agenda is approved. Conflicts of interest. I've reviewed the agenda and have no conflicts.
None for Tim?
None for Rachel.
None for Jim.
None for Carol.
Very good. Let's move on now to old business, unfinished business, facilities.
Yes, I'll just start with that we do have a public meeting coming up this Wednesday at Austin Elementary in regards to our potential elementary project that our building committee's working on. And I'll basically let Jim and Tim kind of share a little bit about what the committee's been doing and future meetings after that.
The first public meeting that we had, and I won't get the date right, a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago, very, very well received. We had great discussion, lot of questions, which is exactly what we wanted. Updated the website to reflect all those questions. For those of you who weren't able to attend or want to learn more about it at any time, you can go to that 4 million school bond website. And the one thing that we have had in subsequent meetings from the committee standpoint is we want to do everything that we can to be frugal with that building and the budget and the project, but very likely due to the increase in cost of construction materials that we've all heard about in any project going on in the next 18 months. But there still seems to be a lot of anticipated volatility and availability of materials over the next year. So it's very likely we may have to increase our bond ask from two to three, hopefully not, but could be as much as $4 million to accomplish what we believe is the future need over the next 50-plus years. We certainly hope we don't have to ask for that much more, but if we were going to put it out for vote today, we probably would have to because of availability and timing of materials. The other unfortunate potential to that with our timeline, we really would like to occupy that building after the bond is successful in the fall of 2023. But the winter of 2023 may be the reality because of those supply chain issues. So more to come. I just wanted to be sure to mention it tonight to be fully transparent to the public and to everyone involved. We'll do everything we can to keep that ask as low as we can, but we only get that one chance to ask. So we want to do it right, and that's what we need to look for that 50- to 70-year window down the road.
Questions, comments?
Nothing to add. There is a meeting this Wednesday, another public meeting on it. I think the feedback's been very positive at the meeting or other comments that are on the website, and we keep updating that with all the answers. And so I think as Tim said, the intent is to go for the bond issue in October with a vote at this time.
I do want to make a comment from the public that they are asking if our school board has media because nothing is streaming. So I don't know if we could take a look over there to see if we are streaming live. Thanks, Don.
And I guess an additional note in terms of the-
Let's tell the public. So it'll be posted later, the recording will be posted later?
Yes.
Is that what he said? Okay.
So along those lines, the Citizen Committee that is part of this project as well is scheduling a tentative meeting for Wednesday, June 2nd at 7:00 PM at the middle school. And at this point, that's our, would be our third public meeting on this. We've had one previously at Jolly a few weeks ago, one this Wednesday at 7 o'clock at Austin, and the third meeting in this session would be June 2nd at 7 o'clock at the middle school. So-
Thanks for remembering that.
-next scheduled meeting, so.
Well, and that was a great thought that I think Mrs. Johnson had about doing the middle school. So if you can't make it to the one at Austin this week, come to the middle school June 2nd. The part of the thought behind that is we want to go out and visualize after looking at the drawings, you can step right out the west doors of the middle school and lay it all out.
I do want to add, Tim, we had some comments about it was kind of hard to hear from the public when they were asking the questions, if maybe we could pass a microphone around next time so that when those questions are asked or vice versa, repeat the question.
Perfect, yep.
So if they had a hard time hearing.
We did talk about that. So we will, we'll do that better. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Very good. Let's move on to our COVID update.
Yes, this will be the last COVID update for the time that we're in school with students. Our next meeting in June, the buildings will be vacated by that time. So we're getting prepared for our graduation, of course, and our last two weeks of school. And we're eternally grateful for all the people that helped devise our return to school plan, all the medical folks and professionals in our community that helped guide the decisions, everybody from our state down to locals that helped contribute to make that a very, very successful plan. And most of all, thank our staff and our students for bearing the load of making sure that things were done well and done properly. So thank to everyone involved with our entire school community for that. So we're really, really proud this evening to be able to share with you that last week, we did not have any active cases of COVID in the district. Up till this point, you know, we've had about 80% or over 80% of our staff committed to the vaccine. I don't get the final numbers of that, so it could be higher than that, I'm not certain. And at this point, of course, vaccinations are available to all students in our school district from age 16 on up. And there's a good possibility that throughout the summer with increased testing and things, that that might be lowered perhaps to age 12. So we would be very blessed to maybe have middle school through high school plus staff having the availability of the vaccine, which is exciting news for this time for us. The mitigations that we've been using throughout the school year with masks and social distancing and all the other things that we've been doing have continued, and Mr. Huska and the coaches continue to use the policies and practices from the South Dakota High School Activities Association for a safe return to our activities. And we will conclude the year with those. We've continued to allow more adult rec into our buildings, more visitors into our buildings with continued mitigations. But the nice thing about that, those mitigations, is the fact that we haven't seen any upward spread. So that continues to be in isolation. Our building isolation areas have largely been vacated, and our med techs are still in use, but thankfully, they haven't been used as much for med tech responsibilities as they've been used for other responsibilities in the building. Our community spread continues to decline, hospitalizations are down, and thankfully nationally and as well as in the state of South Dakota, serious illness deaths and things have continued to drop. So at this point, we're looking at what our school friends and neighbors in our community are doing. As of today, of course, the mask mandates at the University of South Dakota and the Board of Regents have ceased, and it's gone to a mask recommended situation at the facilities at USD. How that has an impact on us is that we have graduation this Saturday at the Coyote Sanford Sports Arena. And so we will determine this evening, how does that look for our school district. I would propose that since we have used this mandates and our return to school plan, that we would conclude the year with that and ask that the staff and the students and the people that are involved with the graduation would continue to mask, take their masks off for their pictures, and then put them back on. And we would finish our year with our mitigations. And even though USD at this point is not requiring that. And then, of course, as we're looking at for a greater sense of normalcy, I would contend that we are at the position that at the end of this school term on May 21st, that we would be able to alter our return to school plan in a couple different ways. In the last 18 weeks, we've had less than 40 cases. So we're averaging zero to two cases per week in a population of 1,300. So we're in a very good place, in my opinion, that between vaccinations and people's alerted sense of health and being aware, that we could safely return students and staff to school this summer without a mask mandate. So I'd like to have the board have discussions with that. And we could achieve that through a couple different methods. One is, is that we could let our return to school plan expire on the 21st of May, with the exception that if the sports that are continuing, which would be track, that they would continue their mitigations through the end of their season, which would be another eight to 10 days after school's out. When school is in session throughout the summer, whether it's summer school activities, extended school years, alternative school programming, driver's ed, any of those types of things, that we would extend, of course, to be a masked welcome school, but not a mandated school. I feel that when we decrease the numbers in our buildings by several hundred, the fact that we could achieve social distancing and have an enhanced health awareness, that we'd be able to provide a secure and safe learning environment for the few students and the few staff that would be inside our building. And below on the bullets that I gave the school board, it talked about a couple ways to achieve that would be to let the plan expire, and then we would come back in June and July and determine a new plan for the return to school this fall. You could also achieve that goal by just returning the return to school plan and dropping us to the green zone, which is the green, which is masks recommended. And then obviously, it's about the prevention of this summer school. When we have kids in school, how will we handle that? Driver's ed in an enclosed vehicle, for example, is that a place that would warrant still having masks versus inside a classroom when you can spread students out? And ultimately, it's about preparing like we did last summer for this year, to have the committee meet this summer for next year based on the data that's coming. So I guess that's the report this evening. A lot of good news to share there, and just want to get our guidance from the board about graduation for this coming weekend on USD's campus, as well as the timeline for our return to school plan. Are there any questions for that?
I do want to add, we are live on Channel 3.
Okay, excellent.
According to your viewers. And I do believe USD is actually optional, is that the wording they're using it? Not even mask recommended. Is that correct?
Thank you. That's a good clarification that USD is-
And it makes sense, you know, their students have wrapped up this past weekend.
Correct.
Campus is pretty quiet.
That would be correct.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I would guess.
So, you know, the first thing, is there any comments, discussion on graduation? So the recommendation is that we would maintain the expectation as a school event for our students and our faculty, staff that were there?
Correct, correct. It makes sense that we've had a really successful plan this year, that we would ride this plan to the, all the way to the end of school on May 21st.
Sound okay? And then the second one, I think this is, you know, the two options, thoughts, positive, negative, of either moving to the green status or to just simply let the COVID plan expire and then see what comes over the summer.
I would like it to expire. I think that sounds-
One consideration, the driver's ed protocols were addressed earlier at a prior meeting. And if I remember correctly, we did say that we would support that masks would be required for that program. Am I remembering this correctly?
Yes, you are correct. And I think namely Bill's, Mr. Settle's question and concern was making sure that we had masks in those cars, because, you know, they would be driving several hours a day with up to four passengers in a contained area. So that would be a very appropriate accommodation to continue.
And the classroom setting as well? Was there concern with regard to that? I just want to make sure that we follow through on our commitment to that.
I think that my recommendation is that we'll be able to spread them out in the classrooms, or if we needed to, we've got a theater, we've got a gym, we've got plenty of space that if we needed a teacher or students that were concerned about that, one, they could still mask voluntarily, or two, we could put them into a situation where they're in a room that's this size and be able to spread them out socially distant.
And I think like what the CDC says, too, like you can give verbal acknowledgement if you've had the vaccine. So it could be very possible that Mr. Settles could be sitting in a car with four children who have been vaccinated. And in those situations, the CDC says you do not have to be masked, too. So by the time he starts to do that, you know, I'm guessing probably this week, we're probably going to go up to 12 and above for being vaccinated. So the age that'll be doing driver's ed more could be very possible, completed their vaccine series by then, too. But we use that, too, as just if you can verbally acknowledge that I've been vaccinated, Jim and I have been vaccinated, we can sit in a room together without our masks on, you know.
So if the return to school plan expires with the school year, then we would have to have a separate plan in place for driver's ed to maintain what we had indicated earlier.
So can we just make a separate policy that says masks can be-
Well, how some schools have handled it during this year, some schools never made a policy whatsoever.
Right, and we didn't either.
Right. They basically put a practice in place that allowed administrators and teachers to morph as necessary, so they didn't have to have board approval for really any part of that. If you were to let the plan expire administratively, we would come up with a practice that while you were inside the driver's ed vehicle, that you would be masked. And one of the benefits of this, this is voluntary programming. So if somebody really doesn't want to do it, they're not forced to do this like they are forced to come to public school. You know, they had no choices this summer or this last fall, because by state law, they had to attend school. This is a voluntary program. The meal program at the Jolly Elementary is a volunteer program. Summer school is a voluntary program. Alternative school is a voluntary program. None of these things would infringe on anybody's rights, because it would be completely voluntary. And if I didn't choose to participate, I wouldn't have to, because it wouldn't have any impact on my ability to learn, my grades, or anything. I'd be choosing my package. So that's the nice thing about this, as well as it's kind of built for that.
So each individual could set their own rules for that class?
Well, I wouldn't, I don't think that would be appropriate in terms of, I don't want teachers to decide for their class. What's, if the procedure is that we have let the plan expire, then as a district, we've chosen that we're not going to mandate it. If I, as an individual teacher, would like to wear a mask in my summer school classroom, I certainly can. If I'm an individual student who would like to attend that class, I could. But we, as a district, would not be mandating nor allowing teachers to mandate-
But you could recommend it.
They could certainly recommend it, yeah. We'd be a masked welcome school for sure.
So where does that leave us with driver's ed? I heard Carol's comment is that we made a commitment to earlier, and if the plan expires, then we have no, well, we would still have to have a practice in place to meet that.
Could we do it by a practice?
Yep. Administratively, Mr. Huska and Mr. Frye would set the stage for that to be a part of the driver's ed program.
Does that satisfy everyone? Okay.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Alvey, that we could make regarding outside mask usage to follow the CDC's guidance on-
Do it immediately mean, or?
Yeah, I mean, with the next, I mean, I know there's only nine days left of school, so maybe it doesn't make sense to do that, but-
Right.
You know, do we do anything with that outside mask usage?
Yeah, at this point, absolutely, we certainly could. But if you felt like we wanted to just extend it and just, and we only had nine more days, we would be supportive of that. But quite honestly, the CDC's guidance on outside masks wearing has improved with that social distancing. Our students and staff could accommodate that maskless outside environment and would welcome it. But at this point, completely, we're willing to support it all the way through if that's the board's desire.
I would be okay if the rest of the board wants to have a motion to allow mask removal during outside activities.
I mean, really, are recesses, or how long, 15, 20 minutes?
Yeah.
I mean, right, so we're within that at first, you know, that 15-minute guideline that we used to have back in the day. But, I mean, they're outside, I guarantee you, they're probably not just standing there. Most of those kiddos, they're running around and-
Yeah.
And they're cohorts that they've been in all year long.
Yep.
I guess I would personally be supportive of if they wanted to follow the CDC's recommendation on that. A little bit of a reward for the great job that those-
The temperature doesn't warm up, they're going to want to wear-
I know. During soccer, it's nice to wear those masks.
So do I have a motion on any amendments to the return to school plan? I think we would have to have that for the outdoor change.
Correct.
Can you just, can you just repeat, repeat what we've decided upon?
Well, I can. I think we've decided on the following. I get a consensus that we're okay with no masks outdoors for the remainder of the school year, that we will use administrative rule for mask in driver's ed in vehicles, and then any environment in which we can't maintain safe separation over the summer with a much smaller density of people in the buildings. And we will let the return to school plan expire.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Carol.
And we'll add that they'll follow the sports regs until they finish up with that sports, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Rachel. Any further discussion?
I just want to say how awesome it is that we're talking about having it expire. That is fabulous. What a great, successful, I don't know where the party is for this, but I, I mean, what a great, what a great year for everybody to make it this far as well as everybody's done.
Absolutely. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the current return to school plan, which is nearing the end of school plan, I guess, to allow mask removal during outdoor activities, barring the athletic participation that we will finish out, and to allow administrative authority over summer activities where distancing can be allowed or in vehicles for driver's ed. All in favor?
I'm sorry, one more is that we will continue them at graduation.
We will continue them at graduation, yes, which is indoors. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Abstentions? Amendments to the COVID, or to the return to school plan are approved. Okay, moving on to new business. I believe we can have a single motion for all of these items. As always, if there's any particular item you wish to have separated out for a vote, please indicate so, and we will do that. Otherwise, we will continue through our new business. Item A, the 21-22 preliminary school district budget. You should have that in your packet.
I guess what we'd like to have you note is that, you know, the budget is still being worked on through some committee work here over the next couple months for approval at the July board meeting. But the front page of the budget there shows the assumptions, and the assumptions are, the circumstances are the conditions that we build this budget on with the finance committee. And the assumptions are the circumstances or the conditions that we build this budget on with the finance committee. Anything from what insurance has done to any new staff hires to the negotiations package and so on. So Sheila, anything to add?
It is a work in progress. But by South Dakota codified law, we do have to present a preliminary at the main meeting. So gives you an idea of the direction that we're going and we plan to fine tune it soon.
Any questions or comments on the preliminary budget?
Just want to make a comment on the workers' compensation. The mod went down from 2.08 to 1.51. Congratulations. Well done.
Yep, and then thank you to all the staff and everybody that contributed to that because, you know, it's their diligence to reduce slip and falls and other accidents on the work site that allows those mods to go down. So yes, very well done.
Any other comments? Okay, following on, you also have the tentative capital outlay budget on the next page of your packet. Are there any questions or comments on the capital outlay tentative budget preliminary?
It's basically a five-year draft of things. Some of them are year-to-year, such as desks and cameras and things for the classroom. Sometimes there's larger items such as a vehicle purchase or a new roof or technology needs or lighting for a particular area of the building. So the building committee will be finalizing and looking over some of these items and putting their stamp on what types of priorities that they are for the district. One goal of our capital outlay will be to be as frugal as we can in the attempt that if we are building forward with a new building project of an elementary school, that we'll have some ability to self-fund portions of that project through the capital outlay reserve. So that's just basically, this is the moving target right now. But it will be over the next two months getting more and more firm and give us a good picture of what projects will be coming up in the district.
Some of them, go ahead, Rachel.
Just happy to see that the wall update for the middle school was included there. So hopefully that price is accurate. I guess it might be a little higher than 25,000. But it's good to see some of those upgrades that are needed in the middle school as well.
And we've got some that have come through and made a couple of, getting some quotes at this point. So that might change after we get that quote.
On the last page where it says additional consideration?
Yes.
And the, like the bleachers, the 18, 19, is, are those completed items?
Sorry, yes, those are the high school auxiliary gym. Yep. Some of those, when you see a date behind it, whether it's carpet or bleachers or soccer fields or whatever, I try to remember to put the date on there that it was accomplished. So we've got kind of a running total. But as you can see, there's been some very significant additions to our practice fields, to our bells and intercom systems, lighting, new phone systems, lots of neat things happening within the district that sometimes people are really not aware of unless you walk the halls. You don't notice some of those things unless you're in our building. So thanks for pointing those out.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an awesome idea. It's very valuable, I think, to everybody to look back at some history. So the only missing thing on some of those would be dollars.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I think that'll help future folks down the road quite a bit.
There isn't anything on grounds, is that because we're waiting to see what, what we need to do with grounds? I mean, there's some groundwork, but.
Yeah, that's a good question, whether we forgot to add something and it was, it was grounds and then we typed groundwork underneath it. I'm not certain, I'll have to look that up. But groundwork is really, I think undergrounds is where some of those things probably fit in. I'm not certain why we left that one blank for honest, but the groundwork is something that we're always doing within the district, whether it's fencing or pothole fixing or dirts or whatever that might be.
And we were able to take care of all of the tree, the ash and all the issues?
Yeah, that's, we, at this point, we've got another selection coming through this summer. But we haven't, we're not going to thin it quite as much as we intended to until we see it actually hit Vermillion.
Okay.
Because we got pretty aggressive that first year and removed a bunch of trees, which was good to thin the areas. But we don't have, as far as I know, a confirmed case yet in town. So we might be a little bit, you know, overzealous if we went to town too much on those, those ash trees, so.
Okay, that makes me happy.
I want to add, Doug, if you're, are you looking at grounds and then the word groundwork?
Yes.
So grounds is actually the header, so every.
Ah, thank you.
Thing has a header, activities, et cetera. Sheila's looking at like, yeah, bridge. Anyway, so yes, there is stuff dedicated for groundwork that's just under the grounds section.
Excellent, thank you.
For the fancy Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, there's no further questions on capital outlay. Item C, you see the notice of the budget hearing. It'll be scheduled for the 12th of July at 7:30, so that will be our first meeting of the new fiscal year where we would convene and then adjourn, have the budget hearing, and then continue on. Okay, next on your agenda, you have the election or a ballot from the South Dakota High School Activities Association. This is amendment number one, and it is a, it changes the date of the, the date at which they calculate the enrollment. I think it changes it by a couple of months, a month or so.
Moves it to September.
Moves it to September. It's not likely to affect us, but it would affect some other districts. And speaking with Damon, and I think you spoke with Jason, who's no longer here, there isn't any reason to oppose this, so we would support it. But I do want to give you a chance to comment if you have any. Okay, so the motion will include a yes vote on the amendment for South Dakota High School Activities Association. Next item is item E, the approval to hire a part-time.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's, there was the AD as well, sorry.
Sorry. Second part of South Dakota High School Activities Association is the elected representative at large for West River. There are four candidates, James Bagwell, Cooper Garnos, Kelly Messmer, and Todd Palmer. Talking again with our administrative staff, both, they know Cooper Garnos and Todd Palmer and would recommend Cooper Garnos, but that is a board decision. If anyone has a strong feeling one way or the other, please voice it now. Okay, so it will include a yes vote and endorsement for Cooper Garnos. Okay, now we can move on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Item E, approval of a part-time executive director with the Vermillion Public School Foundation. If you remember, they came and presented to us last month. And I know that the finance committee has discussed this. I don't mean to put the finance folks on the spot. But do you have a recommendation coming out of finance for this request? Or would we like to discuss it as a board first?
I think, and I don't want to put words in Carol's mouth, I thought we were comfortable bringing it to the board for discussion.
Okay.
I think we brought forward a favorable thought about the position, but really thought it was the full board's process.
Okay, very good.
And before you, what you have there is just some options that if the school district were to entertain a $15,000 donation or an $18,000 donation or a $20,000 donation, what that would do for the Vermillion Public School Foundation executive director position? But it's largely based on the number of hours that they want the person to work as well as the wage that they are able to attract their candidate for. So in all likelihood, it would be anywhere between three to four and a half hours per day for the, basically a calendar year for a 12-month position. At this point, we, in the school district, don't have any part-time positions to partner with it to offer a halftime counseling position with a halftime executive director position. So right now, if the board were to decide to go forward, they'd have to come together with the Vermillion Public Schools Foundation to find out what their contribution would be and then settle on finding somebody who can fill that need on a part-time basis. Our employees, of course, require them to work 30 hours a week for health benefits or more. And anything over 20, the person would be eligible for South Dakota retirement contributions at that point. So that's sort of the shell of what the position could look like.
Wasn't part of the recruitment and plan was to make it with the full time so that way they could offer benefits such as health insurance as being a big incentive?
Right, that was certainly a consideration when the foundation and we had talked that that was a goal is to try to find something to make it as attractive as possible. But we have not been able to accomplish that portion of it yet.
I don't remember if I spoke about it at our meeting last month or if this was in finance committee. But when the foundation presented, you know, things for consideration, I'm in favor of the position. The question mark is, you know, how many years and evaluation of the program and such, all those, those fine details. But I think it's, it's important to me personally that probably the person would be a district employee. It makes sense. It would be hard for the foundation to employ somebody and meet all the rules and regulations of doing that. But I think it would have to be clear that the person report to the foundation board, especially if that's their only duties. If that evolves and they start doing other things for the district, just a very clear delineation of the duties and who they're responsible to for what, to avoid conflict and make it as easy as possible for them. I think the devil's in the details of all that stuff.
Yeah, that's the part that I'm the most uncertain on is, you know, how do you manage partially funding a position? And particularly if we were to find, and we don't, so it's not much of an issue, but if we were to find that and a part of the position was responsible to the board and part of the position was responsible to the district, what if we were no longer in need of that other half? Or if the board, the foundation, wanted to get rid of the executive director, we'd still have this halftime position. So it seems like at this point, the only logical thing is that we would be looking for a part-time position and that will hinder the search. And without benefits, that will further make that a challenge.
I'd rather hold off a little bit and keep brainstorming and make it possible to make it a full-time position. I think that's where the value is added, is finding that right qualified candidate. But we have to figure out where we're going to come up with this half of an FTE.
But aren't we saying that it's a really, it's a Vermillion Public School Foundation position or accountable to them? Sole purpose is to work for them and at least initially seed money or whatever comes from our district. So is it, is it the, and I'm supportive of it depending how it's structured without getting all the details. But aren't we saying we have to decide, do we want to fund it and what amount? We reside, at least initially, on our payroll for one year, two year, three year or two years with an option for a third? Because at some point, the funding switches to the Vermillion, the intent was, I heard, switches 100% to the Vermillion Public School Foundation. Still could be a district employee reporting to Vermillion Public School Foundation. Or it could be at that time, it's a Vermillion Public School Foundation full-time employee. That's what I heard.
Yeah.
So I like the idea, the only responsibilities in that written contractor job description are to the benefit of Vermillion Public School Foundation, which ultimately the school district benefits.
Jim, aren't we basically being an independent contractor? We're hiring somebody as an independent.
They're on our payroll.
But they're on our payrolls. This is like.
It's, it's really.
Weird.
Could be a one-year renewable position, is it?
But they're doing nothing for the school district, only for the foundation.
I contradict that. We benefit hugely from what the foundation does.
Right, but can you write an employment contract based on that?
I think we've heard yes.
Right now, we've got three options listed in the memo in the packet. And it ranges in hours from 3.5 hours a day up to 4.5. And what I'm understanding is what you would like to do is hire this individual at full-time and split the duties between.
That's, that's the only way if you wanted health insurance to make it an attractive position.
Right.
Right, one, one way of doing it.
One way. But then it's split duties. I think it's much cleaner, at least initially, it's just full-time, hard-time, 100% Vermillion Public School Foundation. And I don't disagree with you, Rachel. I agree with you. It'll be a hard, and Doug, it'll be hard to find. But I don't think we need to outguess the market. We don't know for sure who or what's out there. And so I, I would say, you know, move ahead with it as a part-time. And maybe nothing presents itself, the right match is not there. But I don't think we make the decision of the market, just to be devil's advocate.
So what you could do is authorize the donation of funds or the expenditure of funds to the foundation for the hiring of a part-time foundation director or full-time if the foundation wanted to add some compensation. You just pick either option one, two, or three, 15,000, 18,000, or 20,000. You can just contribute the money and then they do all the hiring. If, if you don't want to do that, then it'll always be a potential that the district can find some hours for that person on a full-time basis to be hired and work part-time for the foundation and part-time for the school district.
And I think the one, and I'm sorry, Jim, I will add in there before I forget. I think, and anybody correct me if you're not remembering, but I think what we found is that once we do this, the foundation funds become part of our district audit, which is not really problematic. It probably adds time to the audit. Not hugely problematic, but just so everybody's aware of that. But the funds are still separate and all those things, but there is more oversight by the district than on the funds because we're responsible for the audit.
Does it trigger any other risks for the foundation by being that closely attached? Like their meetings wouldn't have to be public open meetings. They're not hidden or secret where they are now. But is there anything where it could cause, create a liability for the foundation and for their funds?
The only thing that I can think of, in state law, it says that we can support a foundation, but it is supposed to be entirely independent of the school district. And then years ago, when the foundation made their 501(c)(3) application to the IRS, there were some accommodations that had to be made in that application to make sure that that independence was maintained. And so, and it's been a long time since we made that application and it's about a 45-page document. Tom Davies helped with it and I, I can't exactly remember the things we had to change in order to get it. The IRS was very accommodating on it, but there are some things we could potentially do here that could jeopardize that if it were looked at. So I, those are the two things.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'd hate to jeopardize that. That would be the one thing that does cause me angst is that blows the whole idea of the foundation if we can't maintain that status.
I think in Kaderina and the rest of the group's meetings, that they've modeled their approach after a couple of other school districts in the state that have done this in the past and that we would work closely with what they've done so that we can follow a blueprint that's been successful and modeled in the state. So I feel comfortable that if we follow that plan, we should be able to keep their integrity and ours separate enough that it wouldn't cause us, either of us, any grief, so.
So I guess the question is, do you want to expend money in a lump sum and let the foundation do all the hiring? foundation do all the hiring, determining wages, hours, withholding and all that? Or does the school district want to do it the way it seems to be contemplated in options one, two, and three here? Under any one of these three options, there would not be enough hours per week to trigger health insurance?
Do we want to start back in finance and recommend and come back to us? Or do we have enough here to recommend funds allocate or appropriate, subject to, you know, it's going to report to, it'll be accountable, my understanding, Vermillion Public School Foundation, they'd have to, you know, subject to ensure there's what we talked about previous. And then there's the job description accountability test back to us. So that would, you know, full-time or part-time. To me, it was the ask, we're not going to get it to a full-time position for unless Vermillion Public School Foundation have money. So it's really dollar contribution from us.
Right.
Test basis, two or three year period to see where it goes. And do we have enough information to make that decision tonight?
Katerina, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is the start date, is there a critical reason that this, when, when would you hope, obviously sooner rather than later?
So the the idea is totally, we're talking about, as you said, we wanted them to be school employees. But, you know, and we would figure out how that's work because we were modeling on on other schools where we knew that that worked. And I think we've had discussions with those schools as well.
Yes.
And and so that's why we're willing to do it that way. Now, as far as start dates concerned, you know, obviously we like it when it works, but you know, if you can't make a decision tonight, I understand that. But but the idea was really modeling it after those other schools in the state that did it that way so that we we didn't run into these problems. And then I think with the flexibility, because, you know, Mr. Robler is saying that it's possibly in the summer, you might find, maybe you do need a position or something comes up where you see that, you know, then you have a flexibility, if we find the right candidate, that that we can put that together. But as you said, the market, we guys see what's out there in the market. It might end up just being a part-time position, but we might find a fantastic candidate where where the school district is just able to, we need somebody in this area that fits well. And so, you know, we have that option.
I think my concern too is the rate of pay that was used in the calculation. I don't think for that eighteen dollars an hour, I think you're going to have to go up to twenty to twenty-five, which will then also throw the contributions up personally. If you pull anybody, even if they're coming out as their bachelor's, it's going to be more than that eighteen dollars. So if you want anybody with some good background, we're going to have to automatically up that rate of pay too. So which would probably put you in the twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
But wasn't that discussed that we would look at the initial seed money? There still could be money coming from
Right.
the public foundation to augment it. It's just what is our contribution?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think
To jumpstart it.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, are we willing to put in some one-time money and let them figure that out? Are we willing to create a part-time position? Those are really the two things. And if we're not ready to do that tonight, then I think we, rather than just kick it down the road, I think we need to ask ourselves, what are the specific questions we want answered? So we don't just keep delaying. The the only thought I had on this is, and I I asked the question last month about the sustainability, would the foundation have the funds? And I personally would like to see a bit of a transitional investment, maybe one that phases, not completely out, but at least starts phasing out so that we can start to assess, is that happening? Otherwise, at the end of, say, a two or three year period, you just take over, you know, a twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollar expense. And that could be, if it's not happened, then that person's, you know, out of luck right away. I'm sensing we we do want a little more information, a little more clarity before our next meeting. So what are, what are the specific things we need to know?
I'm I'm supportive of the role and some funds to it. So I think it's just, we have to say, what is that amount and duration? You know, do you go more the first year, less second, you know, then based on accountability, you do a third or transitions? You know, they're asking for twenty each for three years, so that should be our top side. And then we go down, you know, through there. I believe, my personal opinion, when you start out, it should be a hun, it has to be a hundred percent aligned to the public school foundation. Should not be a shared role between district or that. Then it's very clean starting out. Whenever that person's working, they're working on the public school foundation. Be it full-time, three quarters time, part-time. So to me, it's a dollar amount. And then the foundation has to work out, what are the priorities to get for that value?
So does that mean it can be a hundred percent time but still be employed by the district? Or you would prefer it be independent of the district completely?
Preference would be independent district, but it could be the district. And it just here is
Right.
you know, if it's fifteen thousand dollars, or which I, when I say fifteen, that would also include their FICA or workers' comp. So it's all in money.
Yep.
Or it's twenty first year, fifteen second, zero the third, because then it's that sharing going on. So it's more, what is the, what is the dollar amount? Specifics would be worked out. Report to the public school foundation, specifics of the duties, the accountability coming back to us would be from them. So that's very clean. It's, we're funded a position for them. And then they have to show us the return of benefits back.
And, oh, sorry. I guess I'm not clear as to the status of the foundation. Should should we join in on a partnership? I mean, I, I, it seems that maybe it's okay modeled after what other places have done, but maybe it's a concern. So I I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, I think at the very least, you know, I or Damon, I don't know if you have, may want to contact those, a couple of those districts that have done that and just ask about, is this working well?
I I did have that conversation and and it is working very well. And the questions that Jim has has posed with us, and we've done the legwork on it, that school did not, did not do that legwork, did not ask those questions, and they haven't had any issues. But they never went looking for the issues. And so, you know, Jim's wisely advised us that these are potential issues. And so we've been searching through them. The school that we modeled after hasn't had any issues, but they also never asked tough questions. So that's, that's just kind of how it's worked successfully for them. And they, and they've been doing it, Katerina, five or six years, even more, yeah. And and it's, it's been a healthy partnership and brought great things to the district as well as the foundation. So it's certainly a model that we can copy.
So between now and next meeting, then, we would have Jim do more research to make sure it can be done without compromising anything in the foundation?
Yeah, I guess the other thing, and this is just me speaking, not as president, I I can support either a donation or a position. I guess I would, at that point, like to see a very defined position. This rate of pay, this many hours, you know, I appreciate the options. I think that's helpful in the planning stages. But at some point, I think it's better for the board to consider an up, a yes, no vote on a very specific request. So maybe if we can, you know, we ballpark a dollar figure tonight, we can go back, put together something and make sure, because I don't want to say, us say, here's what we'll do, and then all of a sudden, the foundation has to meet and say, whoa, wait a minute. So I think both parties should really evaluate the exact same yes or no position request. So whether that means finance comes up with a specific dollar recommendation, and then I guess, Rachel, you and I come up with a personnel committee, you know, position description or position. Yeah.
Have you seen what we listed? In the documents, we have position description or is that what we have in the background?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, I'm talking about like, the exact rate of pay, the number of hours, you know, knowing Right. What's going to be our expenditure? If it's our employee, what's going to be our expenditure? And then right down to the issue of where are they going to do their hours? Are we expecting them to be in a district building doing this? Are they not? That type of thing. But I I don't want to delay this any longer than we already have.
The other option, if we do research, where we could give X dollars and they could have a person who has their own LLC or independent contractor.
Right.
And it's all on them and we get feedback of the results.
That is true.
I like that fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range.
Per year?
Per year.
For how many years?
To be
So the original request was
Two to three years.
Sixty thousand dollars.
Or three years, right. So that's your top of, top of the
That's the top, yeah.
Yep. But somewhere in that fifteen to twenty, two or three years.
I like the fifteen, year one, year two, with an option for year three, depending on how well it's going. So you commit to two years. So that should be enough to get up and off the ground and be the seed money and you see how they progress.
So not setting a specific, not saying zero, but we're not saying fifteen. And if they come, if the foundation were to come and say, okay, this is working really well, but we need one more year and we're going to need ten, we would take that.
We'd consider it after two years.
Right.
So it's really
It's up to two years plus a possibility.
With an option to be considered. So you're not, it's working while it's out or it's just getting rolling. So the next board group would have that discussion.
Yeah.
So you're at least committing for the two years.
Other thoughts, Tim or Carol? No. So we're somewhere between thirty and sixty thousand dollars. Well, do you think we have consensus? Or would you like more very specific action on a dollar figure?
Well, I'm, I'm good if you guys are prepared tonight to, you know, to, you know, we've got at least a two-year commitment, it sounds like. And maybe this would be where the foundation would be able to say, the fifteen or the twenty that the district is going to put in, and the foundation's going to put in another five, whatever their magic number is. Then Katerina would be able to come back to us at the June meeting and say, okay, we know we're going to commit to twenty-three thousand dollars, and this is the amount of hours. We're going to shoot between eighteen and twenty-two dollars an hour to pay. This will be a four-hour a week job or four hours a day job. And then that might satisfy all of the the requirements that the board's looking for. If if it goes really well, then in June, that it gets approved, and that gives us all of June and July to try to hire that person. And then they start the new school year, similar to our staff. They're they're ready to take off and start doing things for the foundation in July perhaps, maybe August, depending on how long it takes to hire them. So in the meantime, Jim, if he finds a really blatant red flag that's a problematic for anybody involved, then we don't go any further in at the June meeting. So I think we've got some good places to start. It gives Katerina and her group the marching orders to start putting some good details together, get the feelers out, and maybe start attracting somebody and finalize it in June.
What do you think? I'll throw out a bit of a compromise. What if we, what do you think about twenty thousand for year one, fifteen for year two? That's a guarantee district support. I I worry about, you know, we saw their financial report. I I don't want to tap into their reserves right away to try to get this off the ground. But I do think after having a person in place for a year, that there's, it's reasonable to expect that they, the foundation can start to pitch in.
So is that twenty, twenty year one, fifteen year two, option for a third?
Option for year three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, so we can put together a proposal with those dollar figures? Or however that would work? Okay, so the final motion will include an allocation of thirty-five thousand dollars for executive director over two years with an option for year three. The intent is twenty thousand year one, fifteen thousand year two. Okay, thank you for the discussion on that. That was very good. Item F. Question? Oh, okay. Approval of insurance and administrative contracts. So I believe, does everyone have this sheet in front of them?
Yep, yep. This is a, basically the notes of the email that we sent last week that after negotiations, the certified staff were offered their contracts a couple of weeks back with a two point four percent increase with the masters that average up to, for some of those place, potential teachers up to a two point eight. It turned out to be a flat dollar amount. So we use that formula for the classified staff as well. So at the top of the page there, you could see that we're planning on an increase equivalent of that two point eight for the classified staff. It'll obviously be broken down into ten or fifteen or twenty-five cent increments. Above that, in talking with finance, we have a recommendation that we would like to incentivize our clerical staff, the five secretaries that are in charge of the the buildings, with a twenty-five cent increase for their med certification. That's in the event that our school nurses aren't available, that we have med certified staff able to give medications. We also talked about, we have one clerical at the high school who is in charge of infinite campus coordination, which is our system for students coming and going from school to school or new to our district. And we would like to offer her a twenty-five cent differential as well for her work in dealing with the, the extra work of infinite campus. The educational assistance, we did a study this year about the market evaluation of their, their increase. And we would propose that those would go to twelve dollar an hour base for our EAs. The next one is, we're talking about administration would get the same exact formula, flat raise, salary increase that the certified staff got. That's basically that two point four percent increase. The average, though, when you have the masters people involved, ends up being thirteen hundred dollars. So we would do the same formula for the administrative staff. The next two there are, in talking with our negotiators and finance, that we would like to set up a proposal so that we can transition out of our retirement with Sheila leaving us this summer and our new business manager, Kevin, coming on board. We would like to have some days where they're working together and some days where Sheila's coming back after her contracted time is done in June to finish up year end. And our proposal there is a daily rate of pay for Kevin and six hundred dollars a day for Sheila, which is the, what we use for our rates for professional development with the state of South Dakota. The next level there in red that's halfway down talks about a group of people that are now kind of in between stages. They're not certified staff, they're not administrative staff, they're not classified staff. That group includes people like the school psychologist, the school nurse, speech language people, social workers, and integrationists and others. Below there, it just shows you what their current contracts are. We would use that proposed two point four percent salary increase. And they're eleven twenty-five for those folks. We did, you would see that under speech language, that we're considering an implementation of a market analysis of the speech language pathologists. We've done a study trying to determine where our staff rate in terms of hospitals and or schools in South Dakota. And we would like to evaluate that over the course of the next month to be able to maybe make some changes there. Uh, our school nurse, particularly, uh, Ms. Askew, who is, who is our lead nurse. Uh, we're proposing an increase there for her stipend, um, for some increased duties that we've asked of her not only this year, but what's coming up in the future. Uh, she will be in charge of being a lead nurse over, um, a second nurse that we're trying to hire currently. Uh, the school social worker, Ms. Hodge there, her, her contract details are below. Uh, but it does talk a little bit about adding two days prior to school for her to, uh, be able to work for the needs of the district, uh, whether it's, uh, working with the counselors or the principals or the tenager takeout, uh, whatever capacity she's using to, uh, basically reimburse her for some of her time during the summertime. And then at the bottom, we just have three little scribbles there that we're working on now. Uh, right now, we're, we're working on a, uh, a proposal with Charlotte Crell. She and, uh, the staff over at the middle school have developed a, uh, they're calling it kind of a maker space at the middle school. This year, when we lost our art program at sixth grade, uh, she created a classroom environment where we could use her for teaching, um, and using language arts skills, math skills, science and technology skills. And it was very successful and, uh, they would like to increase that to have options at the seventh and eighth grade as well. And so that would change her contract from, uh, library aide in one potentially teaching period per day to three teaching periods and then it would be, the rest would be her library time. We would not fill the rest of her library time, there would just be something else that somebody would have to do at the middle school. Uh, we talked briefly earlier about the consideration of assistant track and assistant cross-country. Uh, we'll be bringing those, uh, recommendations to finance and negotiator shortly. And then, um, also throughout this last, uh, seven, eight months, we've been talking about our payroll position at the business office. What are those duties? Uh, does that person, uh, uh, have the availability to do other things in the district for us? Uh, whether it's marketing, uh, if it's working with grants management, food service, other things like that. Uh, we'll be bringing a proposal, uh, after we've had an opportunity to talk with, uh, finance a little more and with the negotiators. But with the new business manager coming, uh, this summer, uh, we will tap into, uh, Kevin's, Mr. Kosher's, um, level of, of expertise with that and see if there's some things that we want to do to alter that position. If that's the case, then we would of course have to take it to our current employee and see if she's, uh, up to the task or if we would change, uh, directions there in some way with that job description and title. So, uh, lots of stuff there, but basically these are all the, uh, financial implications of the negotiated agreement that we ratified with the student, with the teachers at last month's meeting.
So I think the one thing that we'd add from Carol and I from finance, there were four positions that we recommended a maximum wage increase on. Uh, just so you're aware, uh, head custodian, admin assistant at the central office, accounts payable position, or no, I'm sorry, the payroll and accounts payable and the educational assistant. And it had been, I think, three years since we had changed any of those maximums on there. It's been reviewed every year, but we had not changed the maximums on any positions, so the, I think the time had come.
Okay. Any other questions on any of those items? So I think we've actually talked through item F and G, since we went through the classified.
Oh, I, I question. So the, the three penciled-in items at the bottom of the sheet that you just went through, those are still in process or were?
Correct.
We're not acting on those?
No, no, those are things that are, uh, being proposed, but we haven't confirmed them yet.
My question is, and I'm sure finance has gone through this or been involved in all of these changes, other than the three that'll be deferred as they're fine tuned.
Yeah. Okay, and we can move on to letter H. The acceptance of resignations, you'll find those on page, starting on page twenty-one. So we have resignations from Rachel Franks for assistant drama, Kim Reins for speech-language pathology, Terry Vikum, personal finance, Jay Drake as middle school football coach, Justin Brunick for art, Tony Riedstrom custodian, Andy Holman as strength and conditioning coach, Jesse Rasmussen, fourth grade, Haley Fishback, special education, and Jamie Drake, assistant dance. And item I, you have the approval of the certified, classified and advisor con, like addition, excuse me, issuing of additional contracts or contracts. So Ashley Newman for educational assistant or aide, Tracy Barnett, same position, Paige Chapman for JV volleyball, Haley Doty for ninth-grade volleyball, Megan O'Connor as the senior, one of the senior class advisors, Melanie Mahold for middle school track, Melissa Greasy for fourth grade, Shania Schelm for first grade, and then we do have one new one, Caleb Wissman as the behavior room teacher.
Just a note then, again, uh, as you noticed this month, we had, uh, some folks moving around again. And once again, some of those are folks that, uh, have worked with us and just are, are vacating extracurriculars because they've, you know, their life circumstance have changed. We've had some that have moved on. Uh, some of those folks that are listed were paras for us, they received teaching degrees and now are moving on to other districts to actually start their careers. So we wish all those folks good luck, thank them for their years of service and, and we, uh, wish everybody the best of luck as they move forward in their, their direction. And the same with the people that are coming on board. We've had some of our own staff reassign and go to different, uh, new additional, uh, extra duties. And we have a few that are just moving in and around in the same, uh, building or the different capacities. And so, uh, we welcome some of those people are brand-new and some of them are our staff that are just moving, so.
Uh, item J is the approval of summer employment. So we have two BSA additions, Tatiana Towery and Kenzie Mulhern. Uh, and you have Madison Sipple as a custodian and Mary Ashes, who is, oh, an employee, but this adds sixteen hours over the summer for Mary. Item K is the Medicaid Administration Agreement. So you should see that in your packet, I believe it starts on page, uh, I can't see the page numbers anymore.
Forty-three.
Thank you, forty-three. Um, are there any questions on that agreement? I'm hoping Sheila or Damon can answer them if you do. Okay. Uh, then also in your packet is the approval of homeschool students, number twenty-one dash HS one oh two.
Did we miss something? Did you forget the special ed summer school budget? The red and yellow?
Oh, I was looking at the agenda.
I think that was the additional of just Mary Ash's extra hours. He mentioned it, but didn't reference that.
So the only part that's, it's yellow.
Changed it was Mary.
Right.
Perfect, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so that concludes our new business.
Mo, yeah, motion to approve item A through L.
Second. It's been moved by Tim, seconded by Jim to approve all new business items, A through L. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Abstain, motion passes. Okay, reports, Mr. Alde.
All right, thank you. Um, you had, uh, the information in front of you. Just wanted to say thank you to, uh, Officer Cole, Detective Howard and Deputy Armstrong for, uh, teaching there this year. They had a great little program, um, a few nights back to, uh, with the St. Agnes fifth graders and our fifth graders. Uh, congratulations to those kids graduating from there this year. Thanks to Abdul Hodge, uh, for being the guest speaker, did a great job of sharing life experience and, and, uh, giving kids a good message about, uh, how to say no and how to be, you know, uh, take care of these, these lessons in life as they move into middle school. Uh, I wanted to thank a little bit, uh, about all the staff in our district. Doesn't matter the capacity from school board, uh, down to every person in our building who touches the lives of a student. Uh, last, last week was teacher appreciation week, the school board provided treats to our staff. And we like to share that by saying, you know, it's, it's designated as teacher appreciation week, but it's really staff appreciation week because none of us could do our jobs without every aspect of the people in our buildings doing their thing. So thank you to all of our staff for that. Thanks to, uh, Dr. Collins, Dr. Wilde from Sanford, um, and, uh, they, they're employed in the Sioux Falls branch of Sanford, but they've been doing our bi-weekly meetings for COVID with us this year. They've been a great source of information and, uh, a good sounding board for administrators and others in the district, as well as our local providers to again, want, uh, to again, take advice about our COVID response. And we want to thank everybody for being, uh, partners with us there. Uh, along those lines, the bus company, the, uh, the lunch providers, the LSI, uh, ABC Bus, all the people that have helped make our school year successful this year to get kids to and from school safely, feed them while they're here and work to, to create a great environment for our kids. So just thank you to everybody that's involved with that. Uh, we did administer a satisfaction survey for our parents, uh, that will be administered, should be done this Wednesday. Uh, that's, uh, something that we do kind of along the lines of our, uh, parent, or excuse me, our staff survey that goes out in December. Uh, we also did a survey of all of our homeschool folks. Uh, so all of our administrators reached out personally to, uh, all of our homeschool students and asked about their, um, plans for next year. Are you planning to return? Are you planning to homeschool? Uh, what is your situation? And we, uh, we have some data there that, that we've got kiddos that are coming back and we've got some that, that homeschool has been their choice for, for their, their educational needs forever and will continue to be. And then there were some that we just haven't been able to connect with because their data isn't accurate. Uh, but we'll continue to search that out and we'll give you some of those results, uh, in the, uh, future meeting. Uh, we wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, all those extras, things that staff and students have done in activities recently. Um, you know, whether it's a sport or, uh, the, the school play that was going on, tennis, track, golf, all those things that have been going on. Uh, a good job to those students and the, uh, participants because, uh, they've done a great job of representing themselves in our school this year. A thank you to the coaches and the parents for their contributions. Uh, just a reminder on our calendar, last day of school is the twenty-first with a one-thirty dismissal. So we've got about a week and a half or, uh, just under two weeks left. Our end-of-the-year staff celebration will be on the Thursday, uh, May twentieth. It'll be at the golf course at four o'clock, so board members are welcome to come out. We'll celebrate our teacher of the year and classified employee of the year people. Uh, just a one quick reminder, our summer feeding program, once again, that's a program that's free to all, uh, patrons in our district that are eighteen years of age and younger. That is taking place, uh, from eleven to one at Jolly Elementary School. Uh, it's largely the same as pre-COVID, is where you get to go to the school and enjoy a meal there, uh, if you are, uh, eighteen and below. And we welcome our friends from St. Agnes and all the daycares in town to participate in that as well. There's a couple of dates noted that, uh, the thirty-first and, uh, the fifth of July, that we would be closed for, uh, holiday break there. But the, every other day from the time we get out of school till we start school, uh, every day is counted for this year, which has been a, a district, uh, incentive for us. And we've been trying to get that done the last couple of years and now we've been able to do that. Uh, and next fall, we'd, we think that program will look largely back to normal, which is great, that, uh, we certainly hope we'll have full-service food and vegetable bars where kids can serve themselves and, uh, have multiple choices and the lunch program will look like everything that the kids have enjoyed in previous years. Right now, the, the federal government is proposing, uh, the free breakfast and lunch program. And our understanding is it's come to the state's, uh, attention and that the states will be writing waivers for that at some point. Once we get clarification and notification, we'll be able to celebrate that and let you know, uh, when and how that comes to be. Uh, BSA, uh, we are really getting close to our full, uh, forty-four spots, our allotment. Uh, right now, we're continuing our discussion with the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Northern Plains out of the Brookings Chapter. We will be, uh, having a meeting at the, uh, second of June, uh, with a local board. And the board from, uh, the Brookings Chapter and the Yankton Chapter will be coming here, meeting with our interested folks to really get, go in and get our momentum back about partnering with the Boys and Girls Club, which is an exciting endeavor, endeavor for the district. And, um, just a reminder, this Wednesday at nine o'clock, the VCDC will be hosting their, uh, school board panel. Uh, that'll be happening, I think, Channel Three and Facebook Live, uh, at nine o'clock on Wednesday. So tune in if you haven't, uh, uh, gotten information on that at, to this point. And the last thing is, uh, the state of South Dakota has, uh, is getting their, uh, final phases of medical marijuana implementation, how its impacts will be for school districts. Uh, once we get clarification and the proposals are out there for debate at this point, once that's done, we will be able to write a policy that will, uh, be approved at the school board. Uh, I guess the biggest component of it that, that we will be following is that, uh, school districts will not be required to, uh, dispense of medical marijuana on school campuses. So, uh, if it's a, a prescriptive medicine that the student needs, then it'll be a caretaker that will have to administer that at, at school. Uh, so we will get you all those details once we have, uh, the, the clarification and the debate of that, uh, program done with the Department of Education, hopefully by the June meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Alde? No? Okay. Business manager? No. Uh, board committees?
Well, Tim and I enjoyed a taco in a bag the other day at our food service advisory committee.
It was very tasty.
Yes, it was very good. Um, they've been trialing some pizza rant for pizza days. But otherwise, I think the kids are really excited for a lot of those things to return to normal, like the salad bar especially. But I think excited for the food service program for the summer and things to kick back to normal for the fall.
Okay. Any other committees?
We've covered a lot of items tonight that we've been discussing in finance committee, but we do have a meeting coming up, uh, on May twenty-fourth. And then policy, we have a meeting coming up May twenty-fifth. Um, also, the Native American Parent Advisory Group has, uh, met throughout the year and, uh, newsletters went out to our families, um, with information about, um, things that have happened this year, um, information about the Title VI program and, uh, forms for those. So thank you for all of those who have participated, uh, in that committee over the course of the year.
Very good, thank you.
I will just mention one more time, the, uh, public forum Wednesday night of this week at Austin School regarding the new elementary building and then on June second, seven PM at the middle school.
Excellent. Okay. And we can move on to our financial report.
Okay, uh, starting on page forty-eight is the business managers' report. And I really don't have anything specific to note, but if you have any questions, I'll sure answer them. Um, following that is just the informational items, the cash balance and the tax revenue. Um, again, those are just informational for comparison purposes. And then the actual claims do begin on page fifty-two.
Motion to accept the financial report? Second.
Second, my Carol. To accept and approve the financial report and approve claims. All in favor signify by saying aye. But aye, opposed, nay? Abstain? Okay, reports are approved and accepted.
Doug, can I ask about the picnic?
Abs, oh, yes, sorry, thank you. Yes, before we continue, there was an item under school board about staff picnic. So we have historically had a staff picnic in the fall to kick off the school year. We did not this year. Uh, and is this something? Uh, and is this something we would like to bring back? I certainly would. We won't have Tim here to handle all the logistics. So one of us will have to step up to that.
I heard Tim's gonna come back out of his, his good favor and do one last time.
Tim and Shannon, I think, will be there. I, I always appreciate meeting everybody and getting all the, um, staff together. So I think if they appreciate it, we would like to probably continue that effort.
Yeah, absolutely. So is that what you needed to hear?
Eba.
Great. Okay, uh, are there any future agenda items?
Do you be able to maybe have a discussion about preschool and kind of where we're sitting for numbers, and if we're looking at the expanded preschool, back to our two morning and two afternoon classrooms?
Eba, check. Okay. Other items?
We'll have had kin, the revamped kindergarten roundup from this year by the next meeting?
Yes.
So would that be kind of tie-in with what Rachel?
Yep.
Was talking, all predictions for come August?
Very good. Okay, you can see our next board meetings, we do, however, have, uh, executive session items. So I will need a motion to enter executive session for personnel pursuant to South Dakota codified law one dash twenty-five dash two-one.
Motion to move to executive session?
By Carol.
Second.
Seconded by Tim. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in executive session.